Let's do it.
All right, let's do it then. We're live. Hello, this is the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling and Coach Ashley. We're joined today by Kim and Colin and founder Greg Kilwin. Hey, everybody. How's it going?
It's going awesome. How about you? Hey, everybody.
We've got a 60-degree day here in the Catskills and I gotta say, it's making me happy. It's making me happy for November. I needed some sunshine this week. I think we all do here in the States in particular. And yeah, so we're excited to see you guys all here today. We have some fun content lined up for you. We have five website reviews today. For those of you who were not able to get on and reserve your spot for these very limited, highly coveted little blips of time, do make sure you go over to getoiling.com/websitereview and you can sign up for a future live website review. If we have any additional time today, we will, we'll see if anybody else is here that would like some help with that. So I want to show you guys first, we're not going to go into a full training today, but there's something really exciting. Last week, we talked with one of the founders of Grow Workspace, Chrissy Chin. She was here to share some of their really exciting updates, maybe just a quick show of hands. If you're here and you are a Grow Workspace member, how much do you love? Do you love, love, love that new navigation that they have inside of Grow Workspace? Isn't that awesome? I am so, so excited about that. So for those of you who don't know about it yet, it is getoiling.com/grow, G-R-O. And they're over at Grow Workspace. I want to show you guys something that I made, and we did this, this might be familiar to you, I want to show you guys something that I made on a weekly work session, like a really long time ago. And like in internet years, it's forever, but it's probably just a little over an actual year. And I made a whole funnel out of a Grow Workspace bundle. How many of you guys were here for that webinar where we made a whole funnel out of a Grow Workspace bundle? We took Chrissy's script and turned it into emails. We took a sway and made it a lead magnet, and we put a landing page together. Awesome, awesome. So I know a lot of you guys might be new. Since we made that, you also have not had access to a resource bundle where you can download that thing that I made with that thing and use it for yourself. So how many of you would like to have a funnel made by me powered by Grow Workspace in your own Get Oiling account? I ask all you guys. So I'm going to tell you guys how you can get that, because you can get that now. But quick, let me show you what it looks like. And if you are a Grow Workspace, was it Platinum? Platinum now? If you're a Grow Workspace Platinum, Chrissy has got a code for you, and it's attached to a video that I made yesterday to show and share this thing. All right. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna make my screen just a little smaller here. How is, how is this for a full screen view? Is this okay?
Looks great.
All right, excellent. So I'm gonna rewind this, because this is my favorite landing page theme in Get Oiling. And when you have like a funny baby face like this, it just gives me a chortle when he slides in like that. Anyway, so what we have here is a landing page, the front page of a funnel. And if you have this, you know, show your bio section selected in your website settings, your own story and photo can show up here at the bottom of your landing pages as well. So check this out, right? This is Jane. She wants to know if you know what's in your kids' products. You might be floored what you discover. Enter your name and email to get my free class and learn how you can remove the guesswork of supporting the lifelong well-being of your precious kiddos with a single line of products. Now, if you saw this, would you immediately say, "Oh, she's gonna try to sell me Kidsense" if you weren't already in Young Living? Do you see how we don't have anything on here about anything other than what's important to them, right? So this is gonna be an example of a pretty effective landing page. Now, check this out. When you put your name and email in, I'm gonna put mine in. If I can. All right, here we go. I'm gonna unlock this secret. And now on the next page, I'm gonna go through a sway class. Check that out. It's right in there. Pretty cool, right? All right, now if for some reason this didn't show up, I can click here and go to the actual Grow Workspace sway, to the actual URL for it. If someone has questions, we click here and we can be contacted. And guys, the best part, if they're ready to get started and they want to get their kit, this is already, it's already plugged up. When they click this button, they're going to have your enroller and sponsor number already in the link. So they're going straight over to sign up with you directly. How many of you want to have a class funnel like this working for you in your business? Oh my gosh, guys, and here's the thing, this funnel that I've just showed you, you can do the same thing with this, with any bundle that you have with Grow Workspace. What I did in the email campaign that you will get with this as well is I literally took Chrissy's script from the, I think it's the class, like the Facebook class or something like that, and I broke it up into an email sequence. So there's a series of emails that come daily that talk about this content that engage the person who is there. So you got this in email, people are getting touched on in the email, they see this way, and then of course, they have a place to go buy right now or to get in touch with you if they want more information. Now, how can you get it? You can go over to getoiling.com/grow, G-R-O, and get started. Now, you can get a free account with them. If you just want to start for free, that's a new, really exciting update. If you've never used Grow Workspace, there's a ton of free stuff that you can use just like this. But if you are a Platinum member with Grow Workspace, in part, in one of their trainings that Chrissy has just put together, you're actually going to be able to get that bundle code link and download that funnel into your own Get Oiling account. Pretty cool, right? Pretty, pretty, pretty cool. All right, so I'm excited. How do you want to learn more about the new navigation with Grow Workspace? All you gotta do is go over and just get yourself a free account, and you'll see. You can actually search for things like product lines or topics as opposed to having to know what is where. It's really nice what they've done, and it's broken up into, you know, product education type stuff. So things for your members as well as business education that would be more builder-focused. So really, really cool stuff in there. Highly recommend. We love them. And actually, as soon as we're done here, 1 o'clock, we're gonna be hopping over and getting on a live training with them. So if you guys are already members of Grow Workspace in the Platinum community, you will, or I think it's their VIP group, you will see us there, sharing some information about how you can use Grow Workspace content to text and email using our platform. Because for those of you who don't know already, Grow Workspace makes amazing content. They're one of our content partners you can find on our website. They make email and text and video, or not video, sorry, and images that you can put into video, and lots of other beautiful stuff that you don't have to spend the time trying to learn how to make or just make yourself. And we make it easy for you to send it out to who you want, when you want it, on autopilot, if you want that. So you'll learn more about that when you hop over there with us at 1 o'clock and get started with them for free, guys. It's, they're giving away stuff for free. You should do it. Like you should just go do the free thing. And then, of course, take advantage of the paid one if you are ready and you're serious about growing and saving yourself a ton of time, because they're amazing. Okay, so we got that out of the way. If you came here with questions today and you are looking for help with building your business, with developing your Get Oiling site, I want you to go ahead and start putting those questions in the Q and A now. We are going to do extra live website reviews today. So we'll be running down that list here and we'll be working with you. But do go ahead and start bringing those questions in now so that we can be working with you live. Now, I'm gonna start, if I could pull this up here. All right, you guys, you jumped on this so fast when I emailed about it this morning. All right, Carrie, Carrie or Kari, I don't know if I'm saying your name correctly, and I'm sorry if I'm not. Carrie Welte, W-E-L-T-E, are you here? Raise your hand for me. There we go.
She just said something in Q and A. There we go, okay.
All right, there you go. Hi, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Great. Thanks for being on today. Tell me a little bit about, you know, what you're hoping to learn or have reviewed for your site today as I pulled this up for you.
Mine is kind of just an out-of-the-box website. I just have my basic bio. I would love to have it set up, kind of like you just showed, so I'm definitely gonna check that out. My question is, I went with Good Nature Oil Co., is that gonna work with, you know, trying to leave the title of oils out altogether?
Right, yeah. So it's not a matter of whether or not it works, because anything can be made to work. But it is ideal that, A, and this is just as a rule, if you are, if you're following a lot of the trainings that we teach, or say things that Martha Krejci teaches, if you're familiar with her, and there's a lot of folks who teach this kind of thing, where you're trying to get leads online so that people can find you that you don't already know, you know, who might be interested and who would get started with you. If you really want to maximize use of our site, I really highly recommend that you brand yourself, meaning your name, your name, first name, last name dot com, or some combination of your name dot com. Or if you're going to use a name that's not your own, have it be something that is, that is speaking to a benefit that this person is looking for. You know, some kind of change that they want in their life, something that's important to them, a currency, as I call it in some of my classes and programs. So Good Nature Oil Co., it sounds like a place that you would maybe go to, who's a retailer of oils, and not necessarily someone who is providing contextual solution support, right? I don't know that this name is gonna do you justice.
Okay, good to know.
Yeah, so I would go with your name. Your name is your own. It is, you know, you are the most valuable asset you have for your business. You know, people join you for you, because of you. So yeah, I would focus on that. So what else?
Um. Hmm. I just needed your basic opinion about the name. I don't have. I just have my basic bio, and then when you scroll down, you have all the goodies. And my sponsor is doing great on this. Right now, I'm mainly on Instagram. I'm doing like the reels, I'm taking like an IG training class, but it's the extreme opposite of what you're doing with the, you know, the Gopher Gold, for example. And I haven't had too much time to look into Get Oiling as much as I had liked. I would say everything I'm doing right now, that's probably what I'm stuck on the most, is all the Get Oiling stuff, like.
Got you.
To work the mails and all that good stuff that you guys provide. Yeah, I'm still figuring that out.
Okay, so totally understood. I was actually talking with a client about this this morning. You know, when, when we learn something new, or really when we learn or relearn anything, we have to do a thing. We know that we have, we have two hemispheres in our brain, right? So we've got a left side and a right side. I forget which one is the creative and the analytical, but you know, we have these two sides, right? We typically, everyone, have a dominant one. And regardless of which one is our dominant one, when we sit down and we try to engage both of those things at the same time, we tend to short-circuit, right? We frazzle out, it's too much, that's overwhelm. So if I could recommend anything to you in getting started and maximizing what we do here, if you have an upline that is teaching you, and they're getting good results, and you like what they're doing, and it's something that you want to do as well, what I would do is, is see how you can use our platform to support that strategy. So for instance, this might mean building yourself an email list. So I see that you've got a guide here to grab this guide where you add your essential oils to this breathing technique that you have. First, just, just a little edit here. You want to make sure that when you are on this page, when you hit the view button on the far right-hand corner at the top, that's gonna be the URL that you want to include here, because this is actually gonna go to a page editor, and they're not gonna be able to see it. But that's as an aside. But, but what you do is, is maybe in your, in your bio section on your, on your Instagram, you create sort of a Linktree-type page. Here, let me show you.
Yeah, that's what my sponsor has. She has, I think it's Campfire, and she has all this cool stuff set up. But I'm like, whoa, whoa, I don't know how to do any of this stuff. So I'll just occasionally ask her, "How do you do this, this, and this?" But she just built an entire amazing bulk from her Get Oiling for her team to come into and get off of Facebook. So she knows what she's doing, but she's been doing it for, you know, two and a half, three years.
Sure.
And I'm, I think I'm going four or five months, so.
That's okay. And have some peace with where you are, because she was there too. And, and we are continually improving and working on making this, these learning curves shorter and better for you guys. So here's what, what I would encourage you to do, to revisit the two different hemispheres of the brain thing. Make sure that if you know what you want to say and you want a thing to do a thing, write what you want to say first. Take care of the creative part of the picture first. Write what you know you want to say. Gather the pictures you know you want to have, have an idea of how you want it to look, and then come over here and play with the tech. Don't come over here and open an editor and stare at a blank screen and expect yourself to not get overwhelmed. Even I get overwhelmed when I don't do the right preparation. So that's first thing. And, and you know, give yourself some grace, because this is a learning curve and it's one worth conquering. So, good job. All right, so here's, here's what I want to encourage you to do. If you do nothing else and you use this, like make this the main thing that you use, if you're using Instagram. So I want you to go to Create Pages. This is under Custom Pages, My Site Settings, Custom Pages, okay? Create a page. And you're gonna see Themes here. This link page is just like Linktree. You don't need a Linktree. You have your own right here. So that guide that you want to offer, you just put that on the other side of a landing page, like the one that I just showed you with the Grow Workspace bundles. So what you say is, is you say, you know, "Hey, I've, I've got this, you know, here's, learn how I combine essential oils with a breathing technique to manage my stress every day." You would actually write that, you know, right here, and then you would link to that landing page. And so now people who see you on Instagram, you can say link in bio, they land on this page. They could go to your blog here, they could email you here. And then if you want to give away your guide, give away your guide on this page. You can put your image here, swap it out, you know, whatever you want to use. And, and then just use that in your Instagram so that you can at least get people onto an email list, get leads from Instagram with whatever posting strategies you're following from your upline.
Okay, wonderful. That's what I was looking for in the first place, and I had no idea what I was doing, so.
Excellent. Yeah, so that's, it's a really easy page to make. It's really simple to use. And, and that'll at least have, you know, it'll have you set up to start benefiting from the organizational structure that you can, you can use by being a part of our community using our software.
Okay, thank you so much.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you for joining us. All right, who's next? Christie LaStripes? The Stripes? Christie, are you here? Will you please raise your hand for me? There we go. All right, you're out. How are you?
Great. Doing great. I'm excited.
Yeah, me too. Let me make sure I've got the right link for you so I can bring this up and show it with everybody. Tell me a little bit about what, what kind of, yeah, you are here. Ooh, pretty. Hold on, let me show everybody this. I love that you have produce on the front. I'm a total foodie. Okay. Excellent. All right, so tell us about you. Great job on your site. And what kind of information are you looking for?
Thanks. Well, I had two homepages because after seeing one of y'all's videos like this, I saw that there were new pages, so I went back and redid it. But I'd like, I want you to look at the other homepage in a second when.
Okay.
Linked in the home. But I love the way that one looks, but then I've got all this info on my other homepage. And I don't know if it's too much, you know, word vomit, but it kind of gives people, you know, what my website is about.
Got you, got you. This is really lovely, right up top here. If I can make one recommendation for you, is to create a page section here. And so what that would mean is that right under this image, you would have this call to action and then a button, right? So let me see, I'm gonna stop my share here real quick and actually go into your account. I don't want to like show your, your contact information and stuff. I'll show you what that looks like in the back. Here we go. And what's the name of this page in your, inside of your website? Do you know?
The homepage?
Uh huh.
Is a home.
Okay.
And then my second one is my homepage.
Perfect. All right, here we go. Now I'm on here. Let me share again. Okay, so what I'm, what I'm suggesting is, is that you create right here, we go to headers, put a header here. Take this. Paste it here. And we'll remove that.
So shouldn't my call to action be a a landing page or just a contact or?
So I would suggest that it be a pop-up. You do that in the settings right here, under Lead Capture Settings. So this is what I would offer. You would put something here that you would be offering. And then what's gonna happen is, okay, that's there, we hit Done. So if.
Because I had to contact us, like, there, so.
All right, so I'll put a, put this button in here for you. See if it'll let me go back one. Okay, so. And if we go Lead, if we call this Lead, and we'll just put click here, you can change this out to your liking. All right, so I'm gonna hit Save here. And when we view this, did I do something wrong? So that pop-up is coming up. Hang on just a second. Do you have this open right now by chance?
Yeah.
We, we, we close that for you, please?
The whole page or just?
Colin, I see you laughing. Yeah, just, just close out of the editor, because if you have this open, then it's not gonna save the changes I'm making.
Okay. I think it's closed. On my dashboard.
All right, here we go. So if you've got that closed, I'm gonna save it, and then we'll. All right, actually, and here's, here's what I want to do in that section. Let's, let's change the, the background here and make it stand out a little bit. So I'm gonna change the background color maybe to this. Okay. And then all of this, we're gonna not have a color background, because I think that that's. Okay. Let's try that again. Okay, well, we just want to make sure we remove the background color on the text here is all. That's a pretty simple thing to do. But the idea is, is that we want to, like, this is really nice, and this grabs the eye, but then you want to immediately send their eye down to what they want to do next. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Awesome. And then just for the sake of formatting, I'm gonna do, do, make that a little bit, give that a little bit more space. Okay. All right, so, so yeah, what you want to do is make this the thing that pops up the form. So make sure that this, whatever you have here, is congruent with what's right here. So it's time to find your truth and live out your potential, get my guide to XYZ, whatever you have on that pop-up. Talk about that here, and then of course, they have the chance to get that here. When people find your site, one of the first things you want them to be able to do is see what's in it for them and take action and become a lead. So now they're on your list, and you can reach out to them anytime. And there's someone who would be great for you to communicate with, not just somebody who passed by at, you know, at a show, for instance, and they never saw you again, or maybe they did, but you didn't know, and you had this opportunity, right? So we want to take advantage of the opportunity when they land here. In terms of what you have here, you are doing a good job of sort of separating out and creating a visual break. But I would err on the side of, if it, if it is this long of a passage, potentially moving that off onto another page. Because again, what we want people to be able to do is really go, "All right, why am I here? What'll it do for me? What are the action steps that I can take?" So you want to kind of think about your homepage as a little bit more of a directory as opposed to, you know, a post, a blog post. Does that make sense?
Yes, so I was thinking about taking that off and making it a blog.
Yeah, and the other thing too, and you could have that like be a featured thing by, by any means. But what you want them to be able to do is peruse all of the options for interaction. And if we get them caught up in something that feels like work, and to the very childlike, common human brain on the internet today, with a very, very short attention span, they're gonna see this and it's gonna feel like work unless they already know you and know that you have something that they want. So I would, yeah, I would look at dedicating this to something that allows them to choose to deep dive off the page. And then you want them to be able to make it all the way down here and get into the lead group and follow your blog, right? So, so yeah, just, just think about it more as like a waiting room, you know, with, with multiple doors that they could go into as opposed to, you know, having the full dissertation on the front page.
Okay, okay.
Excellent. You're doing great work.
Thank you. It's a process. How many landing pages should I create, like?
Well, I mean, yes, the answer is as many as you want or need. But in terms of function and what you should ideally have, you should have one, start with one that helps to solve a problem and, and commit to connecting that to content as frequently as possible. Are you, I mean, this is a Gopher Gold website homepage theme, I think, if I'm seeing the colors and stuff down here at the bottom. So in Gopher Gold, where we do the content mapping, map your message, that kind of thing. When you, when you look at the outline for your message map, there are lots of little seeds of content, but think about how they connect to one another, use those, like where something could be a blog post. It could also be a funnel. It could be sort of like a mini product that you give away that relates to these other things that you're talking about. So you need to have 100 times more content than you have landing pages. But you do want to continually be thinking about how you can improve what you're offering in terms of landing pages so that you can get more leads, because the whole point of that content is to grab leads who are there, who are like, "Well, yeah, I like what you have to say. I want more of it." So you want to provide as good an opportunity as frequently as possible to turn the curious passersby into people who, you know, get in the email so that they stick around. Okay, so to answer your question, it's yes, like, a lot, but like, but, but make sure that you're focusing your time proportionally so that you're actually creating more content, because it's the content that actually brings you the volume of people that could become your leads. It's a numbers game, right? Like the more content you have out there that's sharing information that's relevant to someone, the more opportunities there are for people to actually see a landing page. Because we're not, like, people aren't just going to stumble on the landing page on its own. It'll be connected to a piece of content, a social post, more often, a YouTube video, a blog, a blog post, or like a Pinterest pin that goes to a blog post or that goes to a landing page.
Okay. And speaking of blogs, I don't know how long you have for, for mine. I've got a lot of questions.
You're pretty.
I have, just wrote that this morning.
This is great.
Thank you. I have, like narrowing my niche, and I have blog posts about chickens and gardening and whatnot, but I'm kind of getting away from that and focusing more on the health and you know, empowering people to find their health and do more things like the EMF. So should I delete those posts or just let them kind of hang out?
Just let them hang out. And honestly, you should be blogging about things you love to talk about. So if you like talking about your chickens, keep talking about your chickens, because you're gonna find a way to like work the chicken talk into health empowerment. And that's like to the right person for you, they're gonna be like, "Oh my God, I love her." So you're, talk about what, what matters to you and what's in your life and make it relevant to them and solve their problems. If the how-to is about chickens is not something that you want to focus on, that's fine. But I mean, you probably want to attract people who have similar values and share similar interests to you. And so that's the kind of little extra something that can really make a huge difference in someone finding what you, what you see, what, what they see on your site and hearing what you have to say and deciding that you aren't just someone else who's talking about finding your wellness, because there's a bajillion people talking about finding your wellness. You're the one who said that funny thing about chickens, and they like you for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's your, your, your whole, the whole you is a personal brand. We're not putting, like, you can't fit in a box, you know, or at least not an interesting box. It would be a box that covers up all the, you know, all the stuff that's great. So, so don't try to put yourself in one. Just, you know, be out there about who you are and what your values are, and you're gonna attract those people by, you know, showing up, and I think more importantly than anything else, speaking to help them solve the problems that they know that they have in their words. You know, so instead of, instead of talking about, you know, find your wellness, like talk about the problems you know this person has right now, and give them little wins, show them little ways that they can solve their own problems. And then they'll trust you more when you say, "Hey, I could really help you solve this bigger problem, which is finding your wellness." And now they're going to want to know more. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Excellent. I love it. Okay. Great, thank you so much for, for joining us today. I look forward to seeing more of what you, what you put up on your site.
All right, well, thank you.
All right, great shares today, you guys. We've got three more here. Kylie, are you here? Go ahead and raise your hand for me. Go ahead and raise your hand for me. There you are, if it'll let me let you talk. Here we go. Hi, how's it going?
Okay, good, good. How are you?
Great. All right, tell us a little bit about what kind of information you'd like to have reviewed and...
Yes, so my website, like, I'm pretty savvy in terms of, like, have figured out over this past year of playing around with GetOiling in terms of customizing things. I just put my website into, like, the HubSpot, like, Website Reviewer thing, and it came back as 33%. And I was like, "Oh, my God, I've spent so much time on this website. Why is it such a low percentage?" The thing that scored the highest was the SEO, so that was, like, exciting.
That's the most important thing, yeah.
Yeah, so, but let me just, I'll just let you know what the things that scored the lowest were. The performance, so I don't know what that means, but it scored three out of 30. And then security scored zero out of 10. So I don't know what that means, and I don't know how to fix that. And then mobile was also 10 out of 30, so like, not great. So I don't know if you have any, like, tips, tricks of, like, what I could do to make that better?
Yeah, so first thing before, because I want to give this to Greg, but the first thing, the first thing that you should know is that, is that HubSpot kind of offers a sort of competing product, a very expensive one, industry-leading when going back a long time. So a lot of the things that you'll see are going to kind of be geared toward the promotion of their stuff. Just like, there's a grain of salt. I'm not saying there isn't anything to the rest of it, but there is that. Greg, if you could. This is so...
I mean, yeah, totally. Is that report able to be shared? That might be something. Send it in by email. I can look at it. Oftentimes, they have, like, this expandable thing where you can click on a problem, and they'll tell you, like, these are the three things that we detected. So it's very strange.
They did move me over to, like, their free website building course, but I was like, "I don't know how to build my website."
Yeah, and honestly, for things like mobile, you know, maybe they're complaining about images, image sizes, whatever, you know, there can be some little factors there. Like, if it's a really large image on mobile, it'll say, "Well, maybe you should use smaller images." If it looks okay on mobile, that's kind of...
In terms of the actual size of the image, like, the pixel size?
Yep, and there is a, and also the file size too, there's a kind of go hand in hand. There's a tool called tinypng.com that I've been using. It's like the best file, image compression I've ever found, tinypng.com. Basically, you just put your image on there and download it.
Do you know if I can do a smaller PNG file from Canva, because that's where I make a lot of my images, or would I upload that tiny PNG then into Canva?
What you do is you take your PNG file, or JPEG, or whatever Canva gives you, and then you upload it to Tiny PNG. It shrinks it, and then you can download it, and then put it back in to GetOiling.
Okay, so it's like that extra step?
Yeah, and there are a lot of pictures on here, so maybe that's a part of what the performance thing is, you know, that can play in it. I mean, the security of zero seems really strange, because you have a security certificate, but maybe there's something else going on. Can certainly look at that and see, but, but yeah, you know, if it looks fine on mobile, you know, it's mobile. It looks fine here, I guess, unless, you know, there's some things that you like to see. So that's a little odd. And, you know, like I said, there's probably some bias towards, you know, their own tools, but there's also probably a lot of truth in there too, so, yeah.
Can we, like, can we just see a show of hands as a round of applause here for how awesomely she's done, you guys? This is such a good-looking site. You know, and a quick tip for you as well, in this, I did a build recently and wanted to make sure that a particular area looked a certain way on mobile, because I knew it was going to be, it was going to be accessed in two ways. There is a way for you to duplicate sections of your site in the page builder and choose what devices it shows up on, on some rather than others. So just as an example, if I can get over here to yours, to that page. This was your home, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so what you would be able to do is, you know, you duplicate this by hitting this Duplicate section right here. But then, when you go to Edit Section Background, on any section on your page, through these right here, you can choose what it shows up on or what it doesn't show up on. So you could have something that's formatted differently here, that you want formatted a particular way for mobile, and have it only show up on mobile devices. Now, you're going to see it as two whole duplicate sections. It's going to look super weird on your editor, but when you're on the different devices, it'll show up the way that you choose.
Oh, okay, I like that. Cool.
Yeah, and that's, and that's under this...
I'm excited for that.
Yeah, so that's Duplicate, and then Edit the Section Background.
Okay.
Cool.
Okay, that was all my questions. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We like getting these super advanced questions from time to time, from bosses like you, who are doing a great job on our platform. So keep up the good work, and let's definitely be in touch about that thing, that feedback you got, for sure.
Yeah, I'll send that over. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
All right, who is next? Erica, Erica Hoke. Let me find you here. There we go. Hi.
Hello.
How's it going?
Good, how are you?
Great, good to hear from you. Tell us about your site and what you would like to get some feedback on today.
Well, I'm working on redoing my homepage, just to make it a little bit softer. Taking the glaring red button out of the center, but, you know, just customizing a little bit more with some quotes and some different different style of font and things like that. But in the meantime, just feedback on what I do have in terms of content on my page and what I could add additionally to help, you know, move people to the calls to action.
Okay, so actually, what I would consider doing is to put this up here, right here.
Okay.
Right? Because while she may, she may admit and recognize that she may be engaging in some negative talks, negative self-talk, negative talk generally, it's not something that she came to this page saying out loud to herself or in her head. So we want to meet her with either something that's going to be very relevant to her right now, that's going to be very helpful to her right now, or we need to speak to something that's already happening right here. So what I would say is, is, you know, put, I was told I would never have children of my own. These are my four kids. And then down here with your guide, you know, then it becomes, you know, what do you want to offer? You know, these are the first, you know, these are the first four things that I did that made the biggest difference in my journey to fertility. Get me started. Right? And so then you put that here, then you can have a little bit of your own story. And the red buttons are actually, red buttons are actually very good, because they are a pattern interrupt. If you want to have, you know, in terms of like softening and things like that, you can definitely add color to the background of your page. You know, you can actually have a lot more going on, instead of like just the whites, just like there's a background here. And so, like, with the last review I just showed you, when you edit the section background, you can give it a color, you can give it a pattern. That's a really great way to kind of soften the look of things, if, you know, if the white and black and everything, hard corners are sort of harsher than you want to have coming out with your brand. But in terms of the copy, I would just, I would put that power phrase right here. You know, and maybe even include, "And I can help you," and then, you know, then give the guide away. And then you've got your story. I think that's important, that you have that. Another thing that you could do here as well, because this is a little bit longer, is if you had an About page that was dedicated and really went into more information, you could just have, you know, have this be a little bit shorter and have a button to go off to your About page. That's an option. I'm not saying you have to, because this is also perfectly fine. All right, "How can I help you find the health you need to become and stay pregnant?" So I don't, so find the health you need. Just be thinking about the words that they're thinking. These are literally, like, what are they Googling? Because like, when Kylie was just here and she's talking about SEO, when you are effectively using the literal phrases that they would type into Google, you have an extraordinarily higher likelihood of people finding you organically, just Googling and finding your page. And it's not a magic button. It is a thing that you definitely want to learn to incorporate steadily over time. But the best sort of mindset hack to help you get into that without having to dump, you know, a dozen more hours into a course on SEO is to literally just start using the phrases that you think they're Googling and that you use to Google. And that's going to be really helpful to you, and to have that in header sections of the page.
So there, for that one in particular, I could change it to something like, "Am I infertile?", question mark, "Why do I keep having miscarriages?", question mark. These are the kinds of things, you know.
So those, those actually would be great blog post titles, I think, for you. Because I know you can expand on a lot more content. On your page, on the page itself is, that's a little different. Because, I mean, already right here, like, people land here, "Here's your name." "I was told this. They were wrong. Here's my kids. I can help you too. Here's my guide that helps me with XYZ." This should be enough to get somebody onto your list. And then on your list, you're going to talk about joining your community and getting on your blog anyway, right? So most people, just kind of statistically on any webpage, most people don't really make it beyond here. And actually, I would consider making this photo just a little bit smaller, so that it is more above the fold, and their eye can see, "Hey, here's a thing that, like, oh, there's a button for me to click." That's why the red's so valuable. "Ooh, there's a button. I can click it." It's like, we're still like that as adults. We still want to push that elevator button. That's what this is here. So down here, I would say, you know, here are, you know, here's some of my favorite pregnancy and fertility resources. You know, or just be straightforward right here. You know, just super straightforward. "I can help you. Here's what you need to do." And this is here. And again, you know, people who read this statement first, who are struggling to conceive, and then they see your kids, and then you offer something that will help them get closer to that, if they're going to be your lead, they will have made their decision right up here.
Okay.
Yeah.
So as far as minimizing my story, you said to change that to an About section, so how do I, what's, how do I actually do that?
Okay, yeah.
With my picture or my story?
Yeah, so you just create another custom page. So you'd create a custom page, and you can set it up like this, where it's two columns with a header, and it could just be your About page. You can format it very similarly to this section. Because it does have, there's a bit more here, and I think, you know, this isn't going to be the case with every single person who's watching this, that they would need to have their own dedicated, separate page with their story on it. But your story, your fertility story, is so integral to the way that you're building trust with people. And a story like this, a fertility story, one that is fraught with emotion and complication and time, I think it deserves a bigger space because of the sensitive emotional nature of the content. So I think eventually, everyone ought to have a goal of having their own About page, where you can have things like press and book me to talk at your events and things like that. But I think for you in particular, right now, it would be a good idea, just so that you can get more into the, "I'm going to talk about me" without taking up all the space on this page that needs to very much be about them.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I've struggled with, is it feels a lot like, I mean, I've tried to make it about them, but, you know, also telling my story. So would I just then put the first paragraph of my story and a picture, and then, right, and then it's an actual button? Or click here for more? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, either way, read more, have a button. If you feel like the button is too busy for the, you know, the aesthetic that you're going for, that's fine to, you know, read more, and having that hyperlink to your About page would be fine.
Okay.
Excellent.
And then, what is your opinion about offering the consultation at the bottom? Like a free 15-minute or 30-minute, you know, one-on-one chat?
I think that it's a great idea. Yeah, I think you could put this on the footer. You could make a footer and have this on the bottom of any page on your site, that you want to include a footer. But what I would do, again, in your case, and I think this is going to be true really for anyone who wants to include a consultation on the site, is you want to not just keep it open. So this is sort of the base language, right? This is what's included in this theme that I made. But what we want to do, if we're offering a call, is we want to let them know what's in it for them. What are they going to get out of it? So, you know, in our 15-minute call, you're going to walk, or after our 15-minute call, you're going to walk away with a clear picture or, you know, clear steps, the next two things you need to do to, you know, to increase your likelihood of conception in the next three months, or something like that. And so make it, you know, make it clear what's in it for them, so that they'll actually do something with it.
Okay, awesome.
But yeah, you should totally do it, because the more, I mean, you're a closer. We've talked before. You need to have everything on your website. Point toward getting people on the phone, because once you're on a one-on-one with somebody, you're closing them. So that's, I mean, play to your strengths here. Get, yes, get them on the phone.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't had anybody take me up on that yet, so I didn't know if it needed to be.
So what you want to do is make it more prominent, and specifically, don't just say "free consultation." Say, "In 15 minutes, I can help you get clear on the next two things you need to do to get pregnant in the next six months." If you put that down here, they're going to book that call with you, right? And what I would encourage you to do is, instead of just having your contact, the hashtag contact, consider using a call-booking funnel, like I showed on a previous...
Yeah, Acuity.
Yeah, it could be, yeah, it could be Acuity, or I personally use Calendly. I know a lot of folks like to use Acuity, because they have an affiliate program. I haven't used it personally, but you can, you can actually allow them the opportunity to set up their call with you right away. You can charge for calls, you can do all that kind of stuff. So I would actually have that here. And then use that same language and link at the bottom of your emails. You know, just have it showing up frequently, because, you know, people, again, somebody lands on your homepage, they don't tend to go back to your homepage. They tend to go back to a link that you send them to on the site, if they're in your email address. So they're going to go to your blog, or they're going to go to a page you send them to, or they're going to go to your member area. This actually is not a page that's going to get a ton of traffic unless you're sending people there specifically. So anything that you want people to take advantage of, you want to repeat in other areas of your site, like this.
Okay.
Excellent. Proud of you, proud of this work that you're doing. Thank you for sharing with us today. All right, one more. We have Claudette. Are you here, Claudette? Here you are. Come on out and chat with us. Ooh, look at that logo. Hi.
Hello.
Nice to talk with you. Tell us a little bit about what you would like to know and learn from your site today, as I pull this up for you.
I am just wondering, you know, like, if my homepage is, like, eye-catching, or if there's, like, if I need to have things moved around a little bit. I mean, I'm still, I'm only in a few months of using the GetOiling site, but I really love it.
Awesome. We're really happy to hear that. All right, so first things first, I would definitely, I would definitely shrink the size of your logo down considerably, because people are going to know that it's you. It's, you know, it's, we got the URL up here. We're going to learn more about you. You're here. What we want to be able to do, and this is along the lines of what I just showed you with Erica's page, is that when people land here, I want you to think about this as a newspaper, like a print newspaper. And in, you know, in the old days, when everybody read papers, you'd see a stack of papers, and you would choose whether or not to pick up and buy the paper, often based on above the fold, right? Like, when it's folded and sitting on a table, the stuff that's on the front, that you can see, the headlines, the image, that's usually the thing that drives sales of the paper. Your website, the philosophy behind how you structure your website is very, very, very similar. So you want to have some kind of message that's very clear. "I helped this kind of person get this kind of result." And you can have an image here, or whatever, but we need to have something that speaks directly to them, so that they know why they should keep scrolling. Because, you know, your About page can be all about you, just pouring out all the things that you want to share about who you are. But if we're not communicating what we do for them, they have no reason to stick around, and their attention spans are so short, they most certainly will not, if they aren't clear on what's in it for them. So what I would say is, let's see, "Love health." let's see, love helping others achieve their goals, passionate about abundance, health and wellness. Okay, let me see. You've got resources, lactose-free recipes. And then we don't have these set up just yet, do we, I think?
No, I don't think, let me see here. Yeah, that one is set up for my online Bible study that I have.
Oh, okay. Great. And what is, that one's not linked. Okay, and then we've got lactose-free recipes. Oh, this is cool. Oh, cool. I like it. This is great. All right, so, so tell me about, tell me about your person. Tell me about your, your ideal someone that you really want to be in your business and working with you.
Um, I've just kind of, I think, just reaching out, like, I've got a few things, because I know, like, because I work with Martha, right? Like, I'm in her course. And just kind of, I have a few things I just don't quite, I think, know how to put them quite together, because I have, like, there's so many things sprinkled in my life. One thing is just like with, well, wellness. I have, I have an autoimmune disease, so I have psoriatic arthritis. And then, of course, I did have, I have a son who had childhood epilepsy. And somehow, I do want to kind of help people with that. That's kind of my goal, but I also, right now, I've released this Bible study, which has just been, I only have a few people in it right now, but it's thriving. It's kind of like a download I had from the Lord, and that's just my course that I've got up and going. And, and people are having amazing results from it.
Okay, okay. So, so here's what I want you to do, if you do nothing else. I want you to think about, okay, you said they're getting amazing results. I want you to grab a couple of actual testimonial stories from those people. I see you already have one here on the page. And I want you to say, I help this type of person. Is it woman? Is it mom? Is it, what are the qualifiers? Get this result, and name it, the results that they're talking about. And then you can give them a little piece of the Bible study course.
Okay, yeah.
That's what your lead magnet is. So if you have, you know, if it's a calendar, it's a passage, it's a video, it's a whatever, give them a thing away for free. All right, so I help, I help people like you get this result that people are getting right now. You have it, right? It's not in your head, it's real. And then, and then I want you to have the call to action, get my, whatever it is you're giving away, and then give them a button, just like we just saw with Erica. You know, I'm going to help you get this. Click here to get it, okay? And then you give them that. And then, once they have opted in, you are emailing them in that campaign about this Bible study course.
Right.
Right? So just follow, follow the funnel and go for gold. Figure out what piece of that Bible study course you want to give away. And then just make sure that in the campaign that you attach to that funnel, you're talking about this Bible study course, include those stories of transformation and invite people there. Have links, you know, continually, like, in every email, you point over to the call to action. What do they do next? Excuse me, how do they get access? That kind of thing.
Oh, that is awesome. I do have a question. I know how it's like, kind of like white in the background. Is there a way of changing, like, having another color other than white? Or is it just?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, there is. Yeah, actually, you know what, let me, Jess, I don't know if you're here, but I'm going to show you one of our websites. We'll be bragging on her a lot more here soon. You'll notice that there is very little white in the background on this site.
Oh, I love that.
Mm-hmm. She just launched this, and it's amazing, and she's, she's got a vault going. But this is, yeah, these, these are backgrounds on our site, you know. This was made in Canva, this background here, and then just imported over as the background. Yeah, and as, as this, it's the same thing. So you can do a solid color, so just like I did in a previous, previous site review, that little half-circle background, you just click that, you can change the color, you can add a background and change the settings for it. So, yeah, anywhere on your site, you can color, pattern, whatever you like, for sure.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you so much for coming out and sharing with us today.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah, and keep in touch. We want to, want to see the work that you do. Take care. All right, so we had a couple of questions left here before we run off to go join Grow Workspace. Make sure you head over to getoiling.com/grow, G-R-O. And if you are one of their premium members, you'll be seeing us here in four minutes in their group. All right, so Susan had a question. Is that page you just showed how to create, is that added to the homepage? Susan, I believe you're talking about the link, the link template, the link page template. That is just a page on its own, and so you would create that, use that page template to make a link page and link that to your Instagram. There's a video that tells, is there a video that tells us how to add the call to action to the homepage? I may have missed that call. So, no, this is going to be in a number of different trainings that show how to use our, our custom pages. I've got a lot of those. Really, all you got to do is type it. And then it had the plus button to add your button, and then have that go either to pop up or to go somewhere else. All right, my story is really long. Should I do an about page with just a short version of me and my story or about them? Yeah, so Susan, on your, on your primary homepage, really needs to be about them as much as possible, because that is like really one of our only chances to say, hey, you, yeah, you, I'm talking to you. I can help you. And if we get, if we go into like a really, really long thing about us, they don't really see how it's about them unless they're already our friend, and that's not really who we're looking for, right? So if you have a very long story, definitely put that over onto an about page. Give a little blurb on it on the homepage, so that they know what they're going to find when they go to that next page. Is there a way to call you? If you're looking for one-on-one or custom work, we do offer that, where I have availability and can take on new clients, if it's a fit, that's something that's an option. Or if you want to work with us on one-on-one custom builds for your site for different projects, just reach out to us and support, and we can help route you in the right direction. Okay, thank you for asking that question. All right, so, let's see, another, hi Paula. I have a link on the seven blessings photo, but it doesn't show up on my laptop, but it did update on my phone. So, not sure, Greg might be able to chime in, but I know that when I have had an issue with something not showing up in one place, but it is showing up in another place, it's usually, it's like a browser issue on my end. I was doing this with Greg the other day. I was like, I'm doing this, and it's not changing. And he showed me a screenshot, and it worked fine on his end. Sometimes you have to clear your browser cache, restart, refresh, all that kind of stuff. So that may be the issue, if it is working somewhere else. Is that right, Greg? Did I miss anything?
Yeah, no, that's good. And if, you know, if it's still persistent, I haven't had a chance to look into it here, but you can certainly email us, that's important, and we'll check it out.
Excellent. Thank you, guys, for being here. If you want a website review, it's getoiling.com/websitereview. If you want to join a future live session, you're catching a replay. We are getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. Really, really excited. SSL OK is a secure site layer, so that's something that you can reach, reach out to us about, and we can have put on your site. So again, thank you, guys, for being here. We will see you next week. Have a great weekend. Bye.
Thanks, everybody. Bye.